I'm going to go ahead and open up the work session. So, thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. Tonight's our work session opportunity here from ERS. We know it's been working with district staff to gain a deeper understanding of how we currently allocate our resources. So, I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent. But if you haven't already found your table, please do so. Some of us are going to continue eating as we go into this work session, and we're really excited for tonight's conversation. Good evening, you're actually the senior chair. I appreciate you standing up, that teaching stance. It is a work session tonight, so we're in groups. We can sit up with staff to help provide context and form the conversation. But tonight is really about starting sort of our journey. It is sort of being able to gain context about how we're utilizing resources, time, people, budget to get at our goals. And so, to put this in context, and we have our friends from ERS who are here with us tonight in person. They've flown in, so they're going to take the lead on the work session. We appreciate their partnership to come in and kind of give us that third-party in-depth look. We have a few slides to, well, we have some slides to guide our conversations tonight, if we can get those up. But just to place a little more context into the importance of these conversations is, you'll recall, and I know we have newly elected board members since, but we spent a year co-constraining the vision for our school community. You've heard this. It sets out very clearly what we hope for our graduates. Accompanying that vision is the first of a series of strategic plan that lays out over the next number of years, the set of strategies and actions we're going to put in place to make that vision true. Obviously, you can't tackle a whole strategic plan in one big bite, so we've spent a lot of internal time prioritizing what to sequence first. And then, we have our board goals ultimately. So, the work that we do has to be in service of raising those opportunities and achievement outcomes, particularly for the students we're concerned most about. So, next slide. Given our five strategic plan priorities, tonight's really focused on the first of three goals in that priority is, you know, really taking that in-depth look to build a shared understanding among all of us here in the organization, our state board, around, well, where does it appear that, how are we using our resources? And, you know, what takeaways, trends, priorities, emphasis are you noticing in that work? And that helps to sort of start to build a context, you know, way before we start jumping into an intensive budget development season around where the opportunities might be, is what you're noting in the data, is that aligning what our values are, what we set our priorities are? And most importantly, are the use of those resources moving the needle for the kids towards our board goals? And so, tonight's sort of the first real in-depth look. Thank you, ERS, for being here with us to really start to understand that. This will be the only time that we really start to dive deeper. Board members, I'm sure, are going to have a lot of detailed questions. Some we'll be able to, you know, talk about tonight. Others, we might have to parking lot. And then, in our next session, we'll go deeper on where you're wanting to lean a little bit more. So, I'll turn it over to the ERS team. Angela, but before I do that, CFO, is anything you want to add?
Yeah, you covered it, superintendent. Yeah, so Jonathan Travers, or Angela, sorry. I can't, I don't see Angela. Take it away, Angela.
All right.
There's going to be two Jonathans tonight. Jonathan P., Dave P., and Jake.
Can we have your team turn yourselves on?
Yeah, good evening. I'm Angela King Smith. I'm a partner here with ERS, and I'm going to quickly introduce or have our team introduce themselves. We're going to be facilitating a conversation with you all tonight, focused on PPS and your resources and some of the things that we're seeing, and we hope that it's helpful for you in your internal conversations. So, I'll start here with Courtney. Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. I'm Courtney Hitchcock. I'm a manager here at ERS.
Hi, everyone. I'm Urgen Schopf. I'm a principal associate at ERS.
And?
Sure.
Sam?
Hi, I'm Sam Brobeck. I'm also a principal associate at ERS.
And I'm Jonathan Travers. I'm a major partner at ERS. Excited to get into our content this evening.
So, as we mentioned, we are known by our, kind of our acronym, ERS, which stands for Education Resource Strategies. We are a national nonprofit housed or based out of Watertown, Massachusetts, which is right there in the heart of Boston. We primarily work with large urban districts around the country to help them to think about how they're leveraging and using their resources. And when we think of resources, we're not just talking about money. We're talking about time and how districts use their people, how they support their people, and how that creates a high-quality learning experience for children to ensure that all children in the school district are receiving quality education. We are a nonprofit organization, and we like to call ourselves a partner. I think that kind of distinguishes the way we work in terms of how we work with our school districts around the country. So, our objectives, we started this work back in July-ish timeframe, and the focus for our work is around three main factors. One, building a deep understanding of how you all are using your resources inside the district and across schools, really thinking about ways to identify opportunities to reorganize those resources as you're thinking about your strategic plan, as you're thinking about your goals around equity, and as you're thinking about long-term financial planning. And then, also thinking about how you really can support and put resources around your top priorities within the system. And so, that's kind of the long-term objective of this work. But today, we're really going to be focused around a couple of key things. One, we want to give you a chance to kind of understand ERS and our partnership with PPS. We also want to give you some time to actually get into the data. So, we're going to spend some time helping you to understand our methodology, how we leverage the data, how that can help inform conversations, particularly today, around school funding and school needs. And so, we want this to be a conversation. We want this to be an opportunity for learning and discussion and reflection, which may feel a little bit different. So, we want this to be an opportunity for lots of discussion. So, we're kind of organized in that way, which is why, when you walked in the room, you all saw the table assignments. We'll talk about that in a moment. Here are some norms that are being used in the district. So, we want you to make sure you're staying engaged. We really want you to connect on this work. We've added two additional things. We want to make sure we're assuming good intentions, and as noted before, we want to work collaboratively in our groups and actively participate. So, here are our table assignments for today. I think everybody is where they need to be. I do want to highlight that we have at each table someone to be a note taker, to help us to hear some of the themes. We may not be able to hear out from all the tables. Most of the discussions are going to be in your respective groups, but we will provide an opportunity, probably at the end, if you've got some final reflections and thoughts, at the end, we'll just ask that you hold out to that time, but we will be engaging in conversation and dialogue throughout. Okay?
Okay. So, I'm going to pick up from here. As Angela said, this conversation is going to be focused on school funding, how much we are allocating to each of our schools, and how that aligns or not with our state of strategy around differentiation, equity, around meeting the needs of all students. I want to just be clear as point of entry into this, the relationship between the conversation today around how much at the school level and student outcomes, which is, I think, what we're all motivated by and what we're ultimately here for. To say that it is not, that is, sometimes, we find in these conversations a dissatisfying connection, because there's multiple steps to the logic model that we need to go through to get from how much to outcome. First is just how well are we, are our schools, using the people, time, and money that they've been allocated? So, we're thinking about how much today. Ultimately, that is in service of how well are we organizing people, time, and money? And through those two things, we are delivering services that create experiences for students, and it's those experiences that ultimately drive student outcomes. Your district has identified in its strategic plan a bit of a theory for what the aspirations are, for what that student experience ought to look like. You've named out goals around student outcomes. And so, it's, you know, it's the work ahead of us to think through, what are the ways in which we can more deliberately allocate resources out to schools? What are the ways in which we can more deliberately configure, use more effectively those resources in schools to create student experiences to drive student outcomes? So, that's the ultimate logic that's going to bring us from the conversation today to outcomes, which is, I know, sort of our ultimate goal as system leaders and those who support We're going to get into first, as Angela said, we're going to start talking in a pretty detailed way about data and methodology. So, what exactly is the, are the data sets that we used to do this analysis so far? And how have we manipulated and configured them to get to the answers, to get to the insights that we're hoping to get to today? I would just go back one. Want to say one thing, just from, this is straight adult learning theory, but one thing about how you engage in the data and the inquiry around the data. My counsel here is to take sort of a three-step process in your engagement. First is just seek to understand, like, if we're showing you a chart, just understand, okay, what are the bars represent? What's the vertical axis? What's the horizontal axis? Seek to understand. So, ground yourself in what the substance of the information is, let's be in share. Second, important not to skip this step. Assimilate it with the other information, your other, with your deeper knowledge base. So, how does what you're seeing up on the screen here, how does what you're seeing in the chart, how does that connect, align or not, with your own, with your existing knowledge base? Does it align? Does it conflict? Does it actually supplement? Because it's new information that's adjacent to the knowledge you already have. Ultimately, from there, then that enables you to apply that. So, what's the so what of that? Well, you can, the idea is then to identify implications. Those implications could be places for further inquiry. Ah, now that I understand this, the real question is this. Or maybe it's actually getting straight to opportunities for improvement, for either improving how we're allocating resources or how we're using them in schools. So, that's sort of the preface for putting this, frankly, as straight adult learning theory, that we would sort of counsel teams like this to engage in as you go through, first, the methodology that Courtney's going to speak to, and then the analytics that we'll share.
Great. So, I'll talk through some of the methodology pieces next. There's four steps that we want to talk through, just to make clear the data we're using, and again, how we process that. So, the first step, if you go to the next slide, is kind of the base of the data files that we're using. So, two important notes here. We're looking at data from school year 21, 22. So, this is last school year. So, just know that everything is from last school year, and that's the data we had available. And then, the second piece is that this is planned spend. And so, we worked with a number of data files to configure this. This is planned spend, not actual spend. And so, the files we used here, we have our budget file. We use that for non-personnel. To get to planned personnel spend, we use, we use our payroll file and a vacancy file to estimate that planned spend in personnel. And then, last, we actually used actual SRR expenditures. That's the one place we used actual, just to get to the right level of detail, so that we're able to really get really granular into the spending at PPS. So, that's step one. Step two, we then wanted to focus on core operating dollars. And so, we're looking at $825 million of PPS operations. This includes general fund. This also includes grant funds. So, Title I, special funds are in here. But we have excluded from this work any dollars related to capital expenses, any dollars related to charter pass-throughs, things like that are excluded from this work. We really wanted to focus on the core day-to-day pre-K-12 operation. Step three, you'll see throughout today is ERS codes applies kind of standard coding structure to every line of that planned spend file, so that we can really understand how those dollars are being used. So, you can see a number of different fields. We code, for example, things to uses and functions, to understand how dollars or what dollars are being used for. We code things to different position types. And so, you'll see these standard coding fields throughout. If there are questions about the details behind them as they come up, we're happy to share, but just wanted to give you a heads up that that's happening. And on the next slide, we'll go into one of those specific coding fields is what we call sharing level. We use our sharing level to identify the nature of where spending happens. So, these, we categorize it into four buckets, and this will be important for the dollars we're looking at today. So, those first two buckets, School Reported and School and Central, these are dollars that are taking place at schools. So, School Reported dollars are dollars that are on school budgets. The things that you can pull up and see a school code attached, that is what is School Reported dollars. School and Central dollars are things that are, that may be budgeted at Central Office, but are taking place in a school at a regular and predictable basis, things like maybe a speech pathologist, a PTOT, things that as a school leader, as a school team, you would think of as your school resource. So, there's a School Reported and School and Central, and that'll be the focus for today. The two buckets on the right, Shared Services and Leadership and Management, those are resources that are supporting all schools or shared across all schools. So, those could be things like transportation, which is supporting all schools. Those are things like Central Office teams, like the folks in the room today would be included in that bucket. And so, again, for today, we're really going to be diving deep into funding across schools. We'll be focusing on those first two buckets, which is about $625 million. Okay, last piece of methodology before we get into some of the good stuff is around the set of schools that we're focused on today. So, we will be looking at the 80 schools with traditional programs in PPS for the conversation today. We did this for a couple of reasons. One, we wanted to really start with the place that makes up the biggest part of PPS's budget and the biggest part of spend. The second reason is we wanted to look and compare schools that have comparable service models to really be able to compare next to each other. Some of these other programs, of course, have unique service models that make them a little more challenging to compare in a moment like this. I'm going to require a different set of questions or analysis to really dig into.
So, we just want to quickly see if you have any questions regarding the data and methodology. If not, we want to dive into the data, because this kind of gives you the structure for what you're going to be looking at, but if there are any questions regarding the data and the methodology.
Just to make sure I understand that, the dollars, the two buckets, neither, that doesn't include any of that one-time SRR money or COVID recovery money, it's just our general budget?
It would include SRR dollars as well. And it was a, it was a smaller portion for 21, 22. I think it was about 10 to 21.
So, that's the only, that's the only dollars that are in?
For SRR, yes. But that, so that $625 includes general fund and also includes Title I or grant funding that's taking place at schools.
Yeah, I'm more interested, like, what was one time, what was?
Oh, yes. So, the one-time SRR was around 10 or 20 million for that year, yeah.
Good question. Yes.
This is, it's a broader question. We don't need to spend a lot of time on, but in terms of how the budget's broken down, and I appreciate that you've sort of taken these and, you know, particularly broken in these categories of School and Central, Shared Services, Leadership and Management, do school districts across the country budget in very similar ways? Or are there school districts that, because we budget very much on a line item basis in former public schools, are there school districts that have gone to program-based budgeting where they're not sort of making what I would consider an artificial distinction between Central and not, but actually sort of saying, look, there's a program of curriculum education, whatever it is, that, that all the costs, you know, sort of get put into that?
It's a great question. I'm going to lean on Jonathan. He works with several CFOs across the country. So, Jonathan, you want to answer that question?
I wish the answer was yes. I'd say it's, I'd say mostly not really. One is, one significant difference between systems is a small group of systems use what we call student-based budgeting, or there's a few different terms for it.
Per pupil.
Per pupil-based funding to schools, meaning that each student in the school generates a dollar amount for that school based on the specific characteristics of students. So, all students may have a 1.0 weight, which is $7,000, and then a poverty weight might be another $1,000, and then a special ed weight might be this, and low incoming performance might be that. And so, that adds up to a total pool. All of those allocations for each student add up to a total budget for the school, and then that school decides how they want to spend that total budget. PPS, like 90-some-one percent of districts in the country, use a staffing ratio-based model, and we'll actually, we'll see some analytics on that in a little bit, which is just saying, well, elementary staffing is going to be 20, 20-whatever-one, and middle is 20, 20-whatever, and so they're allocating positions, not dollars. So, that's sort of probably the largest answer to your question. The one, I think the one other thing to note is, I think districts are trying, particularly with SRR now, are thinking, some districts are thinking more about strategy first, budget second. So, they're saying, we're wanting to build out a strategy to create more instructional time for students. Now, the way that we need to allocate resources toward that strategy is going to now, is going to implicate lots of different department codes, program codes, object codes, and so on. But we're going to think about the strategy, and then we're going to map the budget toward that. Everyone's operating system, ERP, sort of accounting structures, have location or department code, which is going to be the school, or special ed, or HR, or finance. They're going to have object code, which is personnel, supplies, contracts. They're going to have program codes or function codes or brand codes that then speak to the purposes of the spend. But for the most part, the thinking is 90-whatever percent of the time, how much are we allocating toward each of our different departments and in service of what that strategies or activities? Okay? Thank you.
So, now, let's get in a little bit into school funding and school need. I'm going to have Jonathan to kind of tee us up for this next section.
Yeah, so, we're going to jump quickly into an exercise here. Angela, want to put up the 80 schools.
Yeah.
So, first, let's just look at your per pupil funding levels for each of your schools. So, this is the dollar per pupil total spend, both what you are budgeting at the school site and the money that you are budgeting centrally, but that plays directly out in schools. So, the per pupil spend at each of your schools, you can see each of your K5, each of your K8s, each of your middles, each of your high schools. You can see a significant range. Actually, this range, I'll say more about this in a little bit, a larger range than we've seen in a lot of other systems. And you can see we pulled out little captions that show some demographic information about four schools individually there. So, you can see the overall dollar per pupil spend, and then underneath that, you can see the percent special ed, the percent DRL, the percent direct certification. Oh, and the total number of students is up there as well. Significant variation across the levels and then within the school levels. So, want to use this as a moment of inquiry and hypothesis generation to bring us into our first exercise.
Okay, so, you had the opportunity to see the chart. What I'm going to post up on the screen is something called poll everywhere. What I want you all to think about is what may be causing that variation that you saw? What I'd like for you to do is to think about what could be causing the variation that you're seeing on the screen, what could be the variation and the reason for that. I want you to think of one word to describe what may be causing, or a short phrase that may be causing that. And then, what I'm going to have you to do is to talk with your neighbor about what may be causing the variation across all 80 schools. And so, on the screen, if you will, and I'm hoping to get the poll working properly. But I'm going to go ahead and ask you to go ahead and go into discussion around what may be causing the variation in your small groups. So, go ahead and go into your small groups, turn and talk with your neighbor about what may be driving the differences in spending.
It's a lot of, it's a lot of discussion. It's the type of students and also.
Okay. So, it is an accident. Yeah. It's intentional. Back to your point, Courtney.
Urgent.
Urgent.
I can't see.
I got my glasses on.
I have glasses.
I mean, the reason I ask is, I mean, I think, like, this is, I've only been on the board for three years, but this, this is what I would expect to see.
So, it's pretty.
So, it's actually, if these were flat, it would actually be different.
And size of schools.
It would be different.
It feels like it's firm.
All right. I hope that you had a chance to talk with your neighbor about what may be causing the variation. I know that, as I was listening in, I know that there was lots of talk on various things that may be driving it, and that's what we're going to actually talk about for the rest of the session of what may be causing the variation in those dollars. So, I'm going to go ahead and turn it to Courtney, and she's going to talk about school designations and the relationship to the various funding levels.
Great. So, as we start to look at some of the analytics of dollar per pupil spend in PPS, we're going to start to group schools by the school designation. So, we're going to look at four, you're going to see four bars, four groups for the designations. You'll see CSI, that first grade bar. You'll see Title I, but non-CSI schools. You'll see the 13 TSI schools that are not Title I, and then we've grouped our non-designated schools. I think, again, just to ground in these designations, we know PPS has a strategy of staffing schools according to these designations, so we wanted to use this as the starting point to understand how those intentions are playing out in real life. So, this is the first look of dollar per pupil spend. This is looking at across first, our K5s, K8s, and middle schools by those designations. So, I'm going to just walk up to be able to point to things, so don't mind me. So, what we see here is that PPS is investing more in their high-end schools. So, I'm going to start with the K5s, just to show what we're looking at. So, of the 22 non-designated K5 schools in PPS, on average, their dollar per pupil is around $11,500 per pupil. We can compare that to the seven TSI non-Title I schools who are receiving around $14,500 per pupil, which is 24% more than those non-designated schools. And we can kind of see that trend throughout, up to the six CSI K5 schools, which are receiving about $18,000 per pupil, or 54% more than the non-designated K5s. And so, we can see that, that's the which is 24% more than those non-designated schools. And we can kind of see that trend throughout, up to the six CSI K5 schools, which are receiving about $18,000 per pupil, or 54% more than the non-designated K5s. And so we can see that, that's, those are big numbers, big percentages here. And that trend is pretty similar for the K8s and for the middle schools there. And when we first saw this, it reflected a lot of the conversations that we've been hearing as we've talked to folks in the district. This is, you know, has been a focus, or that we've heard has been a focus the last few years, to really direct more funding to higher need schools. And so, and this first look, that seems like that's what's playing out. And so we want to spend more time to go a little bit deeper into understanding what's driving that.
Courtney, I just want to amplify one aspect of what you said. You know, a common question that we get is, okay, so we're differentiating consistent with need, great, but how much is the right amount? I wish research told us a specific answer to that question. There isn't an algorithm or a formula that we can point our friends in districts to. There are two ways that we can use to think about what's the right level of differentiation. One is relative. So if we are in a district that is significantly focused on equity, significantly focused on differentiating resources consistently to need, then we would expect our level of differentiation to be much more than we see in other systems that have less of a focus on that as their strategy. I would foreshadow and say that is what we're seeing here. This is significantly more differentiation in PPS than we typically see in districts like PPS across the country. The second way to think about what's the right amount is more, is more formative to say, well, what is the experience that we want our students to have in our highest need schools? How can we configure our people, time, and money? How can we configure resources to deliver services that provide those experiences? And then what's the cost of all of that? Sort of building up from, building backward from student experience. You could think about elements of your strategic plan, laying out a little bit of a blueprint for what that could look like. And then you could go through an exercise, a costing exercise, to build back up to, therefore, or should the dollar per pupil at this set of schools be versus this set of schools versus this set of schools? Neither of those points, neither of those draws from an algorithm born out of research. Both, I think, are reasonable given the system's objectives, the system's strategy, and the knowledge that we can draw from them.
So I have a question. So when you brought up the question as far as what is the right amount? I guess my question would be, and you're guys at research, you know, what are you seeing in other districts that are having higher student achievements among kids of color? What are their amounts?
I think there's two ways to answer that. We are seeing significantly more differentiation, which is what we see here. And we're, and you know, we're seeing a variety of strategies that will, actually, will sort of end our conversation, looking, starting to get into that at the end of our time. Variety of strategies around teaching quality, teaching diversity, right, individual attention, curriculum, or, or school leadership. Since, I'll say more about that in a little bit. But it is, it quickly becomes a question of how well, not just how much.
Just really quickly to follow up on that, on Gary's question, I would also be interested in whether we have benchmarking data for student achievement across the country? Because I know there's a lot of data, and I know we often hear, you know, that there's a, you know, there's an achievement gap, right? There's, you know, everywhere. I'm curious, though. Underlying that question is that there are districts doing really well. And I guess I'm kind of curious, are there and where are they and how many? Because for me, there's, it's interesting, as we sort of analyze the problem, you know, if Portland Public Schools, which we know there's a massive problem in, you know, in student achievement, but if that massive problem is similar to other similarly situated urban school districts, or maybe even smaller, not to say that we don't need to attack it with urgency, but that's different than if we're significantly worse. And that's actually data that I don't think I've seen, maybe I should be looking at Dr. Adams. I'm not sure we've talked about that benchmarking, you know, outside of our district.
It's a great question. And I think part of what makes benchmarking nationally challenging is that every state and every system uses different assessments. So you have to then try to find what is that common measurement we can use to see how well or not we're doing comparatively on an assessment that's measuring the same things in the same ways from similar groups of students. So that's a challenge to, and I'm not saying it's not possible, I'm just saying it's a huge barrier, right? We'd have to find some systems that were using that, or that are comparable, or some systems that also, perhaps, we could think about systems that also use a test that was originally derived from the Smarter Balance Consortium, because that would be basically a similar test, but not the same. And that would be exactly the same. And that's something we could look at, if we could find districts that are similar to ours.
So I would only add, we're looking at resources. Dr. Adams just talked a little bit about ways to measure progress and outcomes. But resources is one variable, right? And some of the other things that are done have been listed out, it's the practices. I'm trying to say, districts that are moving the needle for students of color, you want to look at what strategies are in play. So that's something to learn. So, you know, we're talking about one part of the equation is the work you're doing, the resources you have, which are about building professional capacity across the organization. Where capacity is building high, you'll tend to see better outcomes. If it was just a money question, we would just throw money at it and expect outcomes. It isn't that simple.
I'm going to move us along so that you can get a sense of the high school data regarding how, what the total per pupil looks like across high schools. It's a similar trend and pattern as we saw in the elementaries and the middles. And so here you can see all your high schools across the district, your traditional high schools, and kind of where they are. Courtney, is there any additional thing you wanted to add here?
No, I think, I think you covered it.
Just to ask you about this slide before that had the K5s, the K8s, and the K, um, middle schools. Has PPS invested more in higher need schools across all school levels? But I'm wondering if you did any analysis between the K5s and the K8s? Because it looks like if you're in a K8, you actually get, you have sixth grades and actually K5s, they're going to be, it looks like they're actually getting So it's like, it's not all across all school levels, but also it may be different. And that, did you look at that at all, or?
Yeah, so you're saying like, why is a K8 CSI at 15? It's like, why is a K8 CSI at 15,000 versus a K5 CSI at 18,000?
18,000, right. I mean, that's a pretty big difference.
Yes, definitely. So I think there are, you know, we are thinking right now, this conversation is really focused on need. There's a lot of other factors that influence, influence spend at schools. And so those are probably playing into those differences here.
Would enrollment be one of those things, like if it's a small?
Exactly, it could be enrollment.
But if there's, is there CSI, they still, I don't know, they have the same needs, so just comparing it, it looks like there's a difference based on.
You know, I would say, we were about to peel back the layers of the onion on this a little bit. I wonder if it would be helpful to go a couple of levels in and then come back to this question? Because it's an interesting observation that on the surface here, the K8 spending looks more like middle than it does K5. And so what do we make of that? I'd say, let's get a couple of layers in and then let's come back to that.
So the next section, the next few slides, we really want to dig into different need investments and need policies that PPS has to understand how much of that is contributing to the difference in spend across these schools. So I'm going to come back up here. This first look is pulling out special ed and English learner spending. We often see nationally that special ed spending and investments in English learners drive a lot of the difference across schools. Because we know schools have very different populations of students with disabilities, may serve students differently in settings. And so that's often a thing that is driving a lot of this difference. And so what you'll see now, we have, again, our bar, that's the total amount of spend in a CSI school, I'll use as the example. We've now broken out that into English learners, that light blue, how much of the spend is for English learners? How much is for students with disabilities? And then this dark blue is the remainder. So any spend that is not specifically targeted for English learners and students with disabilities. And so two things, yeah.
Sorry, but for the students with disabilities, does that just encompass any student IP?
Two things standing out here that we would want you to call out is, first, these two buckets, students with disabilities, English learner spend, is certainly driving some of the difference. So we can see that if we compare this bar over here with the left bar, you could see that green and blue is bigger for the CSI schools. So some of the difference in spend is coming from higher investments there, likely from differences in student populations. But then, maybe the more interesting thing is that you see still that there's a big difference left in these dark blue bars. So there's something else going on that is driving the difference in spending across these schools. And so we, again, want to continue to peel that back to understand what might be going into those. This is that same look for high schools, and we see a similar trend at high schools where, again, we see some of the differences coming from special ed and EL investments and some, a lot of it is coming from other investments. And so the next few slides we want to look at is then thinking about the kind of two explicit policies that PPS has around need. The first is the differentiated staffing formulas that I know, I'm sure you all are familiar with. But these are formulas that provide additional resources to designated schools to support lower class sizes. They also, there are also rules to provide additional positions such as assistant principals and instructional specialists to those designated schools. So that's one thing we'll look at. And we also wanted to then look at the equity formula, which provides, distributes at 8% of the instructional positions at PPS. And again, as you're familiar with, distributes dollars to schools with high percentages of students, historically underserved students. And so when we looked at that, the way we wanted to assess that, we said, let's take an example of a median K5 school of about 350 students, that's the median school size for a K5 in PPS, and said, what would that school receive in terms of staffing? If that school was not designated, if that school was a TSI school, a Title I, or a CSI school? We said, what, how would the staffing differ based on those designations and those two policies that we just named? And so I'll walk through, I'll walk through this purple section first. So if this school is non-designated, you can see that school would get a principal, a counselor. You could see that full set of staff that that school would get. And you'll see that, these bottom four are the places where you start to see differences based on designation. And so I'm going to actually come over to the CSI as the example. So for a CSI school, now, there's additional staff that are coming in the forms of APs, instructional specialists, or teachers, and additional FTE that school is receiving from the equity formula. And so when we look at those magnitudes, we see that these two policies that PPS has put in place result, or intend to result in almost 40% more staff at the CSI schools for a K5, 20% at Title I, and 13% at TSI. So again, if we think about, if we like round in where we are, we see, we were seeing a lot of difference in spend at the designated schools. And then we're seeing that a lot of that is coming from intended policies that PPS has put in place. And so if we pull that all together and come back to our next slide with the bars, we've sized that, those two policies in this now orange bar. So this 2.7, $2,000 per pupil, that orange bar represents those additional staff intended for CSI schools. So we've now built that up. And you'll see that a lot of, the majority of the difference now between the designated school spending and non-designated school spend does come from these intended need policies that PPS has in place.
I know that was a lot, but now we really, we want you to turn and talk at your groups about what you saw in this last dataset. What did you notice? What jumped out at you? What are you wondering about? As Jonathan mentioned earlier, you know, in terms of the data, what did you see? And to what extent does this match what you expected to see regarding PPS' current funding policies? And in what ways does this align with the board's vision? So go ahead and turn and talk it with your teams. You'll have about three to four minutes or so. Ready?
And I also have my slide to my computer side.
I mean, I'll just, well, the first thing is that, wow, my parents are getting a steal for my public education. I go to Cleveland and I'm just like, wow. What a deal! Yeah, and they, well, I guess they're paying taxes, so. They're paying some portion of that, but, so, they take away theirs. I think generally, I mean, it seems like things are, other than like me, it's happening exceptionally. Like, I think things seem, Courtney, considering in terms of how we're leveling funding, like, it sounds like we're, like, placing our funding based on policies that we see. So generally, that seems to be a good, like, student, right?
I was just going, what? Sort of mentions a lot. I guess I went back to the slide.
Yeah, that's me. Well, one surprising thing is that you didn't see a big difference in vacancies across the, in terms of. Yes. So we were just saying, what is the dollar? To see if that would change the. We actually didn't see that much difference, like.
Right, so it doesn't explain the whole, so I would say. What a lot of it's coming from, seems to be coming from. Sure, a lot of it's like, it's like the K5s, CSI is actually, once you take out, CSI's total, total, total functions. Once you take out those, their actual, all other systems.
It's the K8s.
That's, 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 that's.
And we had dollars, you know. So we said, we looked at that to say, of the vacancies on November 4th, is there a big difference? To see if that would change the, we were, we did not see that there was a significant difference in these vacancies across.
Yeah, that's where. I have like a confirmation bias because it's just like. Trying to like process that because I don't.
Also seems directed, remembers that you're thinking about the impact. Part of this, part of the analysis.
Yeah, maybe that's the.
And I know it's, it is, I would agree that we need to see, and a high need school would see.
Very, very, it doesn't have high needs, it's easier time, they have an easier time filling sub jobs and. Their jobs, sort of, the, the staffing, it has, very isolated, it teaches, it teaches, it's harder.
Differentials.
I think that would be a lot of the actual spending. There's ways in which, I think, kind of leads us to say, okay.
And, you know, the two together.
I copied it, but I didn't see.
Working to, to have this to provide high quality instruction to ensure that. Um, all of those things together.
Actually, one of the things we thought about more was making all those ads. Actually, with the research game.
So reinforce.
Oh, I just thought. But it is, you know, I read some things. Freddie, I wanted to call you in, you have any thoughts on, you know, how can we show them? Some similar we can sense. Special is just like, what happened to this staff? You know, high need schools aren't being able to afford their positions. And they're, 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 they're hiring themselves.
I don't think we are unique.
But it doesn't.
I'm going to give you about one more minute to wrap up your conversations. So we can show you a little bit more data.
Whether that has to do with necessarily like the students that need support or the level of support that they need.
And there's some schools that have what we call focus, focus.
You certainly don't have procedures.
And that will. So the funding would follow.
That I haven't heard about. So we are, you're not going to teach, well, again, you're going to teach at Jefferson. You know, where we.
And do they have.
Really hard.
And then each dollars.
I'm glad you said. That's not a small thing.
I think it's interesting to do about. You know, I'm thinking too. Or believe yourself. Is your staff in different departments? And.
But it's just.
How much?
But the main thing is.
That's why I like that.
Anyway, it just.
Okay, I'm going to bring us back, I'm going to bring us back. I know you were having lots of really great, hold up. Hold my hand.
You're not going to clap?
I'm not going to clap, I'm not going to clap. Okay, I can do it for my. If you hear my voice clap once, if you can hear my voice clap two times. I used to be a first grade teacher. Okay, so what we want, what we want to do is to kind of show you kind of the next piece of data. We know that you had some great conversations, very lively conversations about some of the policies and what this means and what, and how that data is kind of playing out. What we want to do is now talk about staff. We've been talking a lot about dollars and cents, but what does it look like in terms of the number of staff in all of the schools?
So yeah, so we've been talking about dollars. We want to start to shift in this conversation of how those dollars are actually used and start to shift into the how well conversation. So we'll start, we'll start with staff to try and understand what are these dollars actually translating into? And so right now, we're looking at those same designations across the K eight space. And to say, what is the total FTE per, we're doing it per three hundred fifty students. So you can imagine a school of three fifty, these are the number of staff that would be in that school. And how does that differ across, across these designations? So if we look at those K fives again, you can see a non-designated K five has, those twenty-two K fives have about thirty-six FTE per three hundred fifty students. And you can compare that all the way to the CSI on the left, which has about fifty-eight FTEs per three hundred fifty students. And so that's about sixty percent more or twenty-two additional FTE. And so again, this, this is a pretty big number, bigger than a lot of places we see. And so we want to start to dig into, again, who are those people and how, how are they being organized in schools? And so we'll zoom in just on those K fives for a minute. We see similar trends across the other school level, school levels, but wanted to dig in here. So we saw that there's that additional twenty-two FTE at CSI schools. And we wanted to understand who, who are those positions? And when we play that out, I think you can just click through the full set. We see it's actually a pretty, a pretty good mix of different roles that are making up that twenty-two. It's not, it's not in one area. So you see, it's about eight additional instructional roles in the form of gen ed teachers or gen ed aides. There are about four additional roles in APs or instructional specialists or counselors. There are two to three additional roles of others. So these could be things like office administrators, custodians, librarians, some of the, those types of positions. And around seven additional FTE for students with disabilities and aid. And so again, as we start to think about, you know, how, how well or how are schools organizing these resources? If we just look at the mix, the mix of staffing and think about PPS' intent for how, how the system is directing resources to higher need schools. And we think about things that we, our strategies would want to see. So additional resources to reduce time, or reduce class sizes, or increase time for kids that are further behind. Or think about supports for teachers through instructional specialists, or additional supports for social emotional learning. Just when we think about those and we look at this mix, again, on paper, it seems like the, the composition could support those activities. And so again, we want to now start to move into the ways in which schools are actually organizing against some of those strategies.
So now we'd like for you all to turn in your groups and talk about the staffing at the CSI and designated schools versus the non-designated schools. What surprised you? What extent does, do these levels match kind of your expectations, given the current funding policies? And how does this align with the vision of the district and the board's vision? So go ahead and turn and talk with your neighbors about, I'm going to go ahead and put it back on the screen. Regarding the additional staff at, at the designated schools.
So are these like FTE that we funded it for? Are these FTE that we don't budgeted to rebuild? More resources? Well, I keep running generally the same theme here that, I mean, this, yes, we are. All in our, I could be based on, I like, it's great that we're staffing higher need schools. And I think it just goes back to me.
Be the next part there. I'll talk about.
But it definitely seems to be following generally what.
So I think that gets to the student experience.
Do in the plan that you prescribed.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Uh, does that, you take your concerns, especially, what are they experiencing?
And so, yeah, it makes it, it's, it's interesting, and I, I preface it heavily, I emphasize it.
Yes, exactly. Then we'll, we'll have a little bit of a discussion to hear what you think are, what do you think?
Soon there's a direct correlation between K five and gen ed teachers and for gen ed. That explains how this, this would look at different non-designated schools.
Particular, part of what gets, the layer, I'm curious.
I guess we're saying.
I'm just continuing.
Does that directly correlate? Differences. And I actually guess it does. Well, it's just that, hey, it's. And even the, even the physical. It may be added to.
I'm thinking that we just have started.
Not articulated.
Because you don't need to be designated to give you.
Historically, we've tried to, to these English learners. Yeah, there is, like, and that'll vary between grade levels and somewhere in each grade level.
I just want to have a, that is something.
Maybe that will happen, yeah. Yeah, and maybe that's what's. I'm trying to think of, and I'm thinking about more. I actually think, I have many staffs.
Yeah.
At all levels, we're just.
Happens. And, yeah, the numbers is like, well, you can't ignore that. These are actually, they're really, they're something. I'm thinking again, how are we, is there a similar thing that we can use in data?
So it's. You're greater than fifteen.
That's what I'm hearing. That would, that would, that would camera.
And so just to clarify, as I. That point five FTE that like one orange.
It's really easy to tell that we give more resources.
It's maybe just.
So it's like, much of the non-designated.
Long way of saying, I'd love to also. Right, what I'd love to be able to see in the community is, yes, you have, they're good classes.
And we do have, it's, 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 it's interesting that like, no matter where you go. And you think, it's always going to be a squitty. And that's been one of the interesting things to think about since I've been here.
And so, so in here, I'll say a certain series of lines off. Maybe a policy that says you can, you can, you can transfer into a school. Hire for students. Because those are general, they're going to be lower performing schools. Sort of seeing people. Oh, you want lower classes? Let me get into class. I'm just, I'm just. I think class is, it's, it's, it's.
Yes, sir.
You want to put, that's very, it's a little very clear. Basically, class is the most supportive thing, and yet we can't choose.
You don't, you switch it up. Just take your group, just take the plan.
I hear you.
So, but.
I, I hear you.
And I mean, it's. Like, okay, so. And then, yeah, we talk about. Fall out of title. Giving them the step down years. Go ahead and multiple. Put some work to it.
For me, it's, it's kind of, look at the.
Like, it's also, it's like, you don't see all that years. And just as a student, like, I think. That's. Like, teams that you feel like are very, very tall. It's interesting for us, like, the, how many faculty be assigned here? It's less from like, diving to the student necessarily. Because sometimes I feel like we might say, like, oh, you've got a full faculty here.
So they cross the.
Sometimes. Even if they are.
It feels like something.
True.
Yeah, in my previous decision, it was, there were different staffing issues. But it, and they were in place before. Counting up these designations from the state. There was, it was one difference, and then it was also a major difference. And there were the stories to be. There was not like an.
Now can feel real.
So that's, but that's.
And to what degree is it?
You stood Facebook. So you, I was just saying, this all has to do, the whole entirety of the budget. You know, I want to hire Julia versus Margaret, and Margaret has more experience and I can't afford. No, but they have to make those kind of choices where they say, I can't afford a teacher with the greatest experience. It's a cost more.
All right, if I can have your attention, we're almost there. We're almost there. I want to, you're going to have a chance to get back in your groups in a moment. All right, if you can hear my voice clap once, if you can hear my voice clap two times. All right, so let's, you're going to have a chance to get back in your groups in a moment. But I want to talk about kind of, we started with how much and how well? And how that connects to the student experience and student outcomes. And so I'm going to turn to Jonathan to kind of really talk about kind of what.
I saw it. I, it's all right. I'm with you. I'm, I'm with you.
Right, I have no idea what just happened.
Say something.
Well, I'm. Sort of building on some of the conversation at this table and then pivoting to a last small group conversation that I think is probably more focused on inquiry than on unpacking the data that we've shared already. Want to come back to this notion of school funding and student outcomes and the gap in the logic between those two things. On the left here, we've got for PPS, the student experienced per pupil spend and the student experienced staffing for, for your black middle school students. So thirteen point eight thousand, forty-four teacher, forty-four staff per three hundred fifty students. Contrast that with the student experienced funding level for your white middle school students. Eleven thousand seven hundred, schools of thirties, of thirty-six and a half staff per three hundred students. We have that level of investment on the left. We have the outcomes that we have that we are sort of desperately seeking to change on the right. The disparity going in the other direction. What must be true about what students are experiencing in between these investment levels and these outcome levels to create the disparities that are there? This is really the how well part of our, of this system's resource strategy puzzle that we've got that you all, that I hope to support you in, in working through. So what is the access to teaching quality, to teacher diversity? What is the access, what are the, what is the equity of access to school leadership quality, to parent or reverse content, to instructional time? In, in this table, we were talking about actually, how do you actually get under the hood of these things in individual schools that are being successful? And understand what that looks like to try to build that out a little bit. In our future analysis supporting PPS, we seek to try to get a little bit deeper into some specific metrics of what this actually looks like and what students are actually experiencing. Hopefully that leads to opportunities for improving service delivery, for improving the how well, which then leads to an improvement in student experience, which then changes, pushes the needle on the outcomes that we see all the way on the right. So Angela, in the, in the, our last little small group conversation, you know, I, I want this to actually be a little bit more inquiry and hypo, inquiry focused, like questioning and some hypotheses. That hopefully, that's part of why we're taking notes here. But hopefully we can take that back in helping us do, tighten or home in in our school level analysis. That hopefully that's part of why we're taking notes here, but hopefully we can take that back in helping us do, tighten or home in in our school level analysis that we're gonna engage in as the next part of this work. Hopefully that's helpful for staff, for you all just to sort of hear back and forth and think about the work that, how it relates to the work that you all are doing as well. I'm thinking we're skipping the poll.
We are not, but we do want you to, in your groups, go ahead and talk about, and like you said, from an inquiry, what might be areas that you may want to focus on, um, or are important to understanding what's happening in PPS? So we're, we are gonna have you to go ahead and just turn in your groups and discuss, and, uh, then we'll come back and I'll have a poll for you. Okay, go ahead and turn in your groups and discuss what you just saw.
One of them being.
Into this.
What else are?
I heard your question.
Yeah, so I haven't really heard you.
So. Is. The faculty, is that just an average cost for each one? The question is, what do we expect?
Also, let me discuss a little. So that's. Which, which. This is part, I guess, when I look at this, it's like a professional development.
So the dimensions.
You know, trying to hire the.
You know, how many.
Again, some big level. But that it's not, it's not.
Come to.
Encouragement adoption.
One. Funding.
So for teachers to be there to empower.
But it could change the. Yeah.
To all our teachers.
Our students are talking about.
Where a level of.
Um, how many.
And then.
So she talked about one particular team leader. She had two veteran teachers.
Experiencing.
And the veteran teachers refused to use the.
With a teacher, with a high quality teacher, uh, to address specific needs, uh, you know.
Maybe think differently about.
And so. If our data says.
However, I want to wherever. I'm really, I'm really interested in, um. Still looking at teacher experience, administrator experience.
I mean, just. It would seem, it would cause us to ask, uh, is it that?
True.
White students and it's. Experiencing more, um, I expect. Um, do they have more teachers who are better.
Is.
Do they have principals? And stability.
People want to teach them where they feel comfortable.
Compared to, um, students.
And as things. People start to get like their.
Our black students with research. So, you know, our black students tend to.
Then we start to. I don't want to do that because I used to be an expert.
And they tend to have.
Respect. There's a whole set of, a whole lot of things. Change in the.
Experience, so they're not necessarily getting high quality.
We send a lot of. Because it also. We have not seen as.
You know, in many spaces, there was not.
Relevant. And so. That's our whole.
Giving all students.
Eight touches. I have.
Um, and so, you know, the.
I know. You know, we are.
So, you know, probably just, this is just.
I mean.
Almost wiped out.
Is isolating down. In a way, I just find it powerful, but also.
The, the fifteen that want to be here. And what our.
Says, you know, it also allows us to. I mean, I've, you said all this already, it's like, there's some data here that I assume that. What is. What is the.
But this is a.
It's a little bit harder, those, those last two, first, I feel like, I don't get some. You know, I feel like.
There are lots of low pound statements on here. So this is in power eighty-one. Like there are within these categories, there are. Things that we're working through, so I think it's how about, there's gonna be a question of mixed, there are a lot of categories, which, which is. No, no, it's. It just, you know. And how they. There's something. So we have, you know, if, if. We get to. Is the last.
Right.
Also, this is. It's.
Yeah.
I also wanted to. Try it on. Sorry, I'm coming back to the.
And.
That would be a. On. Thanks. It's about. So, yes, there is no separation between. But it's less than. That we. Which is, which is makes sense because. But I think.
Their.
So I think. I pull these up. But looking at a different. Twenty percent. There is no. You know, should we be looking at. We're still not. I'm gonna say. Make sure I say. Cause I. Right. Because. We're. Inherent racism. Things. Definitely. For people immediately saying, oh, there's a learning gap. Show up. And blame. I want to. I recognize all of the systemic barriers.
That's true.
Ready numbers. But if. That's.
He's already.
For.
Not, not necessarily.
And that.
It's.
Cause I'm.
I'm still. And. One point five. So like I. Grade levels. Like, there are so much stuff going on. I think those. Like this. And then seven years. And we want to. And it's like. And that's what we actually. So that's what they not get to learn. They'll say they only get. Enter the. As I think we're looking through some analysis. And what is. And then get. Year after year after. Uh, I. Or teacher who actually is intentionally not teaching. I've walked. Yes, I see. Has like. Staring at observing that classroom.
Teacher. Construction wrong.
And that's.
That's. That's not the answer.
Just like more people aren't necessarily the answer, right?
Data says that he has come. Everybody's garden. You know. Power. Poverty. Are less ready to learn. And he's telling me like, yes, you have to. Another place we can, we could build.
Look best good what I.
I'm not gonna worry about. I'm not ready for that.
No, I, I was noticing. I just want to make sure.
I think, I think that's.
And you're.
And not do like.
No, I think.
And then. Questions.
I would say.
So much layer on. Central. I wanted to. Social fabric. Pull this up together, which I think is. So much of that is not going to schools. So much.
You could take a high quality teacher, not good. Materials and resources.
If you can hear my voice clap once, if you can hear my voice clap two time. Oh, y'all were nooo. I could tell y'all were deep in thought. Y'all were deep in thought. You need to keep going.
I was mid thought and just. I was mid thought and just clap because I heard it. I had to get in trouble.
Okay, all right, um, so what I want you to do is you've had some very engaging conversations. I want you to think about the dimensions that we talked about, and I know you were talking about specific ones. Um, individually, I want you to think about which one do you think that PPS may need to really, uh, further explore and do research on? Because you believe it's the critical link, as Jonathan was talking about, um, to really helping to drive, uh, student outcomes. So we're gonna do a poll. It is up and live. Even the people at home can do this. Um, you're gonna, uh, either go to poll dot E V dot com. Um, and type in my name and those numbers, which is Angela King Smith four three nine. Or you can text to this, or if you go to poll, uh, poll E V, you can also put in the numbers or my name and it will pop up. Um, you can text it and it will pop, automatically pop on your phone. Two, three, seven, six, oh, seven, and then you would type in Angela King Smith, um, upper or lowercase, it shouldn't matter, four, three, nine, and this poll should pop up. It is activated currently.
Is it case sensitive?
Yeah, I, I don't believe so. You should be able to, it, it's not case insensitive. And, um, you all can, I can tell that three people have done it now and now four. Which area do you think that people need to really focus on? And that's.
Can you read them aloud?
Yes, teacher quality and diversity, thinking about the, your experience, teacher experience, how, uh, uh, experienced they are in terms of, um, and thinking about quality as well as diversity of teachers, school leadership quality, thinking about their experience. And their, uh, quality and the diversity amongst those leaders. Empowering rigorous content, which is option C, high expectations, rich empowering materials, coursework and classes. And then the last one, D, instruction, time and attention, really thinking about how do we differentiate time and attention based on individual student needs to help them to thrive? So those are your choices. This will help us as we're thinking and contemplating some of the work in the next phases. Also, um, we'll be back, uh, to bring more information, um, in some of these areas, uh, for the future, and so that also helps us in terms of climate. So I see we've got fourteen results. That's roughly. Maybe we got a few more people in here, I'm gonna give you a few more minutes to, um, enter that information. And then, um, I'm gonna have you to turn and talk one more time with your table groups about any ahas you have. We are done with our, with the content. And as we move to close, I want you to think about a couple of things. What ahas did you have? What did you see that you didn't know? What did you see that confirmed something that you might have already known? Um, is there something that you're like, oh, I can really use that information to help in a conversation? So we want you to turn and talk with your tables again and have kind of closing reflections on any ahas, wonderings, something that you confirmed, um, something you learned tonight. And then we're gonna come back, poll group, and, uh, and answer any questions you might have, or if there's anybody that has a share or two. So we are almost done. I'm gonna go ahead and have you to turn in your groups real quick. Uh, any closing reflections, thoughts?
I know it's very research. Which. So, so poll. I said A and then C. The research is. I, I.
Yeah, I'd say, uh, I appreciate. You know, one, one topic. Here to be on this is, is this worth sharing? In the research. Just have a conversation. Refrain correctly. I mean, it is. So you're saying, you know, to me, it's worth.
Yeah, I mean, so to, to me, that would be more.
It's a takeaway. Yes, it's confirmed that we. Add these numbers and, and the charts and graphs. That's what, so we can, instead of just, yes, condition your budget for some. You know. And making.
It's really important to understand too, because like you know that Berlin, uh, which people, and we know that it's coming from a different. And we do get this, which there will be lots of other dials to turn, I'm sure, like I know. I'm not gonna see like.
Six. Good, right?
But I think that it's good.
And I.
And I agree, like if you're sharing interest.
We've worked. Got a sense.
How? I guess the one. I guess it's.
And like a.
It's like, what do we do? All of our coaching, all of our like sessions, all.
Too, too fidelity.
Or I mean, like in an individual. What?
So I'm thinking about the.
No, yeah, that's what I, I, I mean.
Especially like how much of. Essentially, you should be.
Okay, and how we.
The language learners. To research.
And I think.
Uh.
Yeah, and I also think.
It'd lead to like, you know, I'm like, is it getting weird that the. And like, okay. How well.
We didn't walk home together.
Yep.
And I very. That looks out and whether you just. All right. Better, but I really.
And this principle, right, right, if I, yeah, I do. Do you know, I also believe that with the right level of support. Teacher educator can be successful. Again, it's. Um, that are open. And mindset.
You know, the.
The adult phenomena.
The question is, the, the outcomes part.
And same. A teacher to go. And same thing, that a teacher can go.
Actually serving.
If you can walk to this day and ensure students.
Honest, that relevant. That they could take action. I think part is. Well, me too, you're. And that there's, there are. One teacher, uh, to the teacher scenario, they're able to do. Good. They're constantly having success. Could be, and then with that. You can. Is everyone into.
Just to see what's in this. I don't see when administrators keep jumping ship, like in Cleveland, I think we celebrated like the first time in three years that we had. And I think like, I've had three different instances that I've been to in my school in my four years. And so I think that like, even on a student level, like we have like a person who's dedicated and who's willing to like stick through the. And he just does some confidence, I mean, like, teachers, but his parents and family. And it makes them feel like. And if you're a child in school where like there is some consistency in administration, also like in strategy. Every time you implement it, you administer yourself, calling something which will. And though that could be crazy, it just means that you have somebody, everything that's. Which is, which is very difficult. Yeah, which is very difficult for someone to find the vision and the outlook and the strategies of our school. So I, but I think the biggest thing I've been hoping this was, is like a lot of optimism, like we are on a path to making things better and that's great.
I, I think. One.
I'm all.
I just wanted to. I just keep your.
Um, I think a variety of things, I think actually like the most stated one of future. I think that a lot of.
Alright, this is.
Like, for example, after.
See the twenty two better.
But um, I think vote of no competence, mature parents, that's.
Those, that are just.
An administrator and just creating. They cycle through because of that.
Maybe potentially.
Which really end up with like a whole. Like incompetence, I think is the biggest thing that people assume when you continuously have new administrators. And then that's the problem. You are just in a thinking shift. And I think then you are some. Very committed and brave to then come into that environment when everyone in the community or kind of like. This is very, this is very bad, like everything here. And I think that's kind of the biggest problem with my personal DC, like if you're one of you. Because also like, I feel like people over and over just buy into that image, like.
Average of twenty two.
Like I think that there is this big problem with terms by.
Do you leverage that?
Narratives. And I think that that is like, and that's just exacerbated with all the. So I think it's lots of. Bunch of bad apples, which I think it's. You think it comes from this assumption that.
What is that?
Things are bad and then that's just a cycle and then it keeps getting worse. And then it takes some people like really strong administrators and kind of takes a huge overhaul here. And it affects like everyone in the school and I do think especially.
Yeah.
You can think like all these things. You can have some great teachers and a really great teacher will be able to motivate students, but if students already feel motivated in their commitment, then they won't be such a strong force to push them towards doing it. And I also think like the mutual respect for students. Res, like respect their teacher and teachers respect their students in fact that it's like a biotic relationship. We put in your part, we put in our part, and I think when you start to give that people here in the schools, that's when you can really like thrive in a learning community. But I think like, especially for. Development of social skills and then because of that. Teachers are really annoying students because they can't control themselves and they're.
That's true.
And so I think it's just like understanding that like, just because one person.
And that's there. What is, what is, what is Lisa's type?
I think we're working.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a student representative on the board.
Now we're working.
Strands.
Working.
Respect is.
I think we teach professionally.
That doesn't make sense. But I am paralyzed like that. Throw that in there. I think definitely like now that I do have the privilege of getting to a position that I feel much more consistent about, like the. And I think it, it doesn't stem from like a lack of.
If you say no, we're gonna.
And also like. Speak from your group and say, we're not necessarily the best. Like if you don't give us exactly what you want us to like talk about, it's very hard to get student responses. And we find that a lot when we work the instructors, so like it's next to impossible to get students to.
Not everyone's. Some people. We should give them an opportunity. Some people that's. And some. Like, I don't. I do.
Or I don't care, like I don't know anything about it and I don't care.
Like some community members are like. Right, they are in mind. And it will. And I understand quite a few. And he said, oh, his sandals were not. Yeah, there was. Like, not because of how big school, because they're gonna. We send our kids.
And I think definitely like as the board, I think that we have to have a big. Because at some point, like we have. And choices.
About twenty seconds. I'm gonna have us to come back.
Gather all the. Because that gave us like a, a center. Survey. Say, okay, we heard one showed up. This was a priority, but we actually didn't represent. Sometimes they align. How do you set up the context?
You can hear my voice clap once. If you hear my voice clap two time. Okay, before we kind of do final questions as well as um some board reflections, I do want to show you the results of the polls. I'm gonna um share it now. So fifty percent of you all said teacher quality and diversity is important for a PPS to further explore. School. School leadership, um, quality was next at thirty five percent. Empowering rigorous content, ten percent. And instruction, time and attention, five percent. One brave soul, just want to say why you thought that it was important to speak to teacher quality and diversity.
Yeah, Gary.
Our student. I think this is so great. Um, I, I don't see it very often, but to have student voice on your board, um, I think is, is just tremendous. So your student uh representative, wanna go ahead and speak to it real quick?
So I'm sure my table group is like, oh, God, I have to go again. But uh, as far as I'm aware, I'm currently the only high school student sitting in this room. And I think that definitely for me and my experience, it's like a good quality teacher can teach anyone. And I think that there's definitely, we talked about coaching models and how we can like help to aid teachers in that. But I think that ultimately it comes down to like the relationship between student and teacher. And that kind of has the biggest effect on how we learn and how we can engage with learning. And so I definitely find that in my experience with school, which over the last twelve years, um, I've definitely found that how good the teacher is with engaging with me and how my learning style aligns with their teaching style has definitely been the biggest factor. And also like my personal relationship with them, so, yeah. Rooted in personal experience.
I think that's pretty powerful to hear from a student.
She's always smarter than we are. Four days she wants to show off.
Thank, thank you very much uh for kind of helping us to, to, to add context to um why that answer might be the answer. Okay, so I know you had some very um engaging conversations in terms of.
So even more.
Are there any just last minute general questions uh before I turn it over to the board chair? And if board members want to give a quick uh whip of reflections, um, but are there any general questions about what you saw or need any uh, any answers? If not. If not, um, if not, we, if you, if something comes to mind soon, um, feel free to uh shoot us a uh email and we'll be sure to. Right? I wanted to make sure I gave time. To have like reflections.
Yeah, why don't we, um, if folks are okay, just go around for a real quick summary of, of, of your thoughts from board members about tonight's session. Uh, and I know I'm really sad actually that um, uh, that Haley and Amy weren't able to make it tonight because this was really, I found it really powerful. But I'll come back to me in a second, so um, do you want to start?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be brief.
Alright.
Because I said, I said.
Fifteen minutes. I gotta go.
Uh, this was, this was very informative. Um, for me, it, it helped to, it helped to make clear some of the things that as a community, we've been talking about, um, speaking to where we need, where we need additional supports. Why aren't we seeing it? And really just breaking down where it's at and how we're focusing our dollars towards the students and the communities that we feel um need more, need more assistance. And to be able to, to break that down, but then also see as um we were discussing at the table, that even with that, the experience that some of our students are feeling, because the need is so great, still for them warrants. I hear what you're saying and I still feel we need more. And so it's not to discredit one as if one is not enough, but it's really to express the, the, the gravity of need within these communities that are experiencing the, the level of lag that they are. Uh, but having these visuals, um, I believe that it, it helps us as board members to be able to speak, um, speak to what we're doing, why it's important. And then also to be able to speak to the community around what they can do, what we can do together to lobby for additional funds. Because making us all fight over these same crumbs is, yeah, we're not gonna do that. But we're fighting over the, the same small pie. And we should be going to the state and different ones saying, we need more. We appreciate what you're doing, but we need more. And we should all be doing that and our voice is, has more of an impact when we all say it versus just a few, so.
Want to be honest?
Yes, that's all I, that's all I need.
Okay, I'm gonna be honest, I shared this with everyone too. Um. I feel that this was just more of um, um, the strategic plan that superintendent and staff has put out there. I think this is just more of a ver, uh, verifying their, confirming, confirming their stuff. Um, and so for me, um, I think that our superintendent and our staff should be more confident in what they're doing. Um, you know, we just, we didn't necessarily need to confirm this because they've already been talking about this. They were talking about equity funding um for our schools. Um, they talked about how we do things and so, um, and like I explained to them, I said, you, you guys have our support as far as the board, as far as the strategic plan that you guys are going. Be more confident in that. You guys are doing it the right way. We know it's gonna take time, we know it's gonna, it's gonna take different things, um, but we, we, we've. We are in a u- unique position right now. And I've said this before, you know, when we have a district that has leadership of color, executive teams of color, boards that we have three black, uh, three African Americans on the board. This is a time that has never happened before. And so we have to be confident in what we're doing. We don't have to second guess ourselves. We don't need to get confirmed by anybody on what we're doing because we're doing the stuff that we're supposed to be doing anyway. And we just need to walk in that, walk in that confidence moving forward, uh, because I think we are on the right path. Uh, I think the board feels that we're on the right path. And you know, even though we're gonna have folks that want stuff done right now, we know that this is gonna take time. You know, the achievement gap that we have didn't start, you know, in two thousand seventeen. You know, that stuff started a long time ago. So as we are looking to confirm, you know, what we're doing, you have to know we just kind of walk in confidence. We have to walk in our truth, um, and knowing that, you know, we are doing what we're supposed to be doing. That's what I'd say.
Thank you, Gary. By ready?
Okay. Um, I think I'm coming away from this certainly with optimism. I think it's great to know that we're being faithful in terms of budgeting and F T E to what our strategic goals are and what our plan is. And I think that's great. Um, I'm not a big math person, but I think that this might be one of the first data sets to ever excite me. Far and hard.
You're clapping.
Um, but I think that it's exciting and I, I, it's, I, it's nice to know that we can maybe move a little bit like, knowing that we are secure in our budgeting and our F T E, moving to those other dials that. Because obviously we're not necessarily seeing, or not necessarily, we are not seeing the progress that we want to. And so I look forward to um addressing those other aspects like high quality teaching materials, coaching, how do we make the student experience better? But I definitely come away from this with optimism, so I want to thank all the people that worked hard to make that happen.
If E R S needs a testimony, I'm sure you have it.
Great job, guys.
Julia?
Yeah, I'm gonna um riff off of Gary. Um, I'm gonna keep doing what we're, what we're doing. Um, to me, it's validating to see the numbers that we have differentiated our resources um to our, our students. And I think the, the only addition I would have is just, you know, in light of the pandemic, so keep doing what we're doing, but also we're in, you know, a deeper hole than. Thought we were gonna be because of what happened during the pandemic. And so, you know, probably all the reasons why we need like the fidelity to implementation and, you know, not losing sight of what we're trying to do. The work is harder because of the pandemic, but. Same course. And I, I think um, the numbers would be surprising to people in the community because I think there is a general, there's a sense that I think that we don't differentiate as much as we do and. It shows that we do.
Great, thank you. Um, Michelle, I know you joined at conflict, uh, but do you want to share your thoughts? Thank you for joining us, Shai. And you're on, you're on mute as well.
Of course. I'm really sorry that I couldn't be here with everybody in person, um, and I joined about an hour into the presentation. Um, I have a lot of curiosity about this slide that talks about the differential funding and the student outcomes. I'd really love to know more about that and I'll go back and wa- watch the first hour of our presentation. I also, you know, to Gary's point, feel hopeful and positive that we're doing the right things. And um, I'll be watching the data to see, you know, that, that our student outcomes are, are climbing or those, that gap is closing. Um, I didn't get to vote on the poll, but I would have voted A also, but I wonder if there is a right answer there or if it's all of the above. Um, I don't know how we can account for students that show up not similarly situated and expect to have them all um get through our system with, you know, a, a similar level of, you know, knowing what the basics are, the essentials. So um, I don't know how we address that. I don't know that, if that was addressed earlier in our presentation, but um, I really want to thank the E R S group. And this was fascinating. I have a ton of curiosity about um, about, about some of the slides in particular and how, how we'll see the benefit of this work together this time next year.
Great, thanks, Michelle. Um, yeah, I'll echo a lot of the same themes. It did, did, the, the, so first of all, it was fantastic and I appreciate sort of seeing all the information um synthesized together and boiled down to some, some real numbers. I think that was powerful. It, it is confirmation and I, I, you know, th- those first questions, I almost thought were trick questions or like, they're like, is this what you would expect? I'm like, yeah, of course, what I expect is what superintendent's been telling us, this is what the budgets we've been adopting are supposed to do. But to see the actual numbers, I think is really helpful. Um, I will say slide forty one, I told my table, it's one of the most powerful slides I've seen all year in any context, not just schools, but, but the reason is because it just boils everything down so clearly. It, it highlights the horrific achievement gap, right? So you just, you see that very starkly. It shows some of the difference in funding, right, between our, our black and white middle school students, which I think is important. And, and one thing I'll say there that, you know, it shows a difference, but, but that, that difference is, you know, it's still worth some additional exploration, right? That difference of roughly twenty percent um is actually a little bit smaller than some of our difference between our non-designated and our designated schools. And so I, I think that, that warrants, you know, we, we see a differentiation. Maybe that differentiation should be more than twenty percent, maybe it should be thirty percent. percent. So we can still have the funding conversation, but then seeing all those four things that we need to dig into. To me, what's going to be really powerful about this is, is how we begin to share this, share this out, right? Out from this room, because I, I do think the superintendent has a good plan and, and a, and a good vision moving forward, um, and I think he's got the board's support. But how do we begin to bring all the other important stakeholders along, right? And, you know, I'm, I'm thinking in my mind about like, when we look at these problems, it's, it's going to involve a lot of people, right, who work for the district, people who don't work for the district, like all coming together to figure out how we do this, um, because that's the only way we're going to solve that, that problem. So, and that slide's going to stick with me, I think, for, for a really long time. Um, but this is, this is, this is, this is great. So really thank you very much, yeah.
Thank you. My turn to Superintendent Carrero to close us out.
Yeah, no, um. I'm thankful for, uh, hearing each of your comments, board members. Uh, I'm glad to see your staff was here to hear as well. Uh, maybe we should meet on Wednesday. We knew that part of the work starting this journey was to make sure we're actively distributing resources. And so it was validating to see ERS to study, uh, and even more amplified it than even I thought we were doing, uh, in the end, uh, certainly. Uh, so, so that's part of the equation and I think I heard and everybody's comments and certainly at our table, we know giving the tools and the resources to our school community is part of the equation. There's other variables. You should feel confident that we're also, and we've embarked on sort of tackling those other factors as well, so, which are about building your organizational capacity. So, you know, resources is one thing, but practices are going to get you the outcomes we want. We had a great discussion, Gary focused a lot on, you know, that student experience, right? Like he shared his stories of student teacher relationship, of the leadership he was exposed to, of kind of climate culture that was established throughout his school experience. And I, I think that's what's going to make the difference in our school communities for our students to know that we have those high expectations of ourselves, of them. And so we're, we're on our way with, you know, the building blocks, uh, the curriculum instruction, school leadership, school improvement cycles. Uh, we're actually to share with you some of our takeaways from a couple of weeks of hearing school teams share because we're listening for, of the investments, if things get a little tighter for us this coming spring, what are the things we're going to want to most hold on to? And then what are some of the other proxies for school designation? Because as you heard, fifteen of our schools are no longer designated. We're going to, we're going to want to use other proxies because we know the challenges in these schools are still there. Like that's a good sign and until every kid in the school is proficient, you know, we have work to do. So, you know, maybe it's free and reduced lunch, maybe it's, you know, some other way to measure it. So, you know, how do we continue to distribute, uh, resources and the time or support or building our capacity to do this work? I'm glad we're having this conversation now that we've commenced because before we get to budget development season, sort of the work that we need to do should be evident at that point. It's going to be important to maintain. So appreciate your attention tonight. Thank you, ERS team. I think it helps set the stage, um, validate some things we understood, but more importantly, I think everybody's asking the right next level of questions for the rest of the team is going to start really talking about those other aspects as well. So let's continue to, uh, insert that student voice, obviously we're counting.
All right, with that, we are adjourned.